Good afternoon. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, December 9th, 2022 Select Board Meeting.
Roll call.
Article five. Cap yellow here.
Sakosha here. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And select person Mantrack was previously excused.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, agenda review and approval.
Um, I'm fine with that. I move that we accept the.
Two changes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm thinking about minutes.
So, motion to add two additional items to the consent agenda at this time?
One.
Oh, just one?
Yeah, I actually asked to pull one off.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, for the ARPA.
In, in reference to the Homestead Cistern.
Yes.
So, that would move us to add one more item, certainly. That is my motion.
I would propose to add the topic of Homestead Cistern to adjust the requirement of a Class 6 and private road building permit issuance from a cistern to sprinklers, residential sprinklers, as an alternative proposed by the applicant. And then I would propose adding the balance of the ARPA funds, some cost savings that we have and what to do with those to new business under B.
Okay, so I would, I would make that motion as stated by the Townings Minister.
Second. Roll call.
Article five.
Cap yellow eye.
Gibson eye.
Sakosha. That brings us up to public comment. If there's anybody in studio and/or online that would like to participate, please raise your hand and please be polite. Okay, nobody in line or on studio, so we're gonna go ahead and close public comment and we're gonna be on to public hearing and invited guest. School, school board liaison.
See anybody tonight?
Nope, nobody in studio or online. So, that brings us up to B, Acceptance of Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Fund for Barrington Lakeside Oaks Drive Culvert.
It's exciting. Did you want to talk about it before we make a motion?
Yep, just briefly, this is a project that's been ongoing for a number of years. This is the outfall of the Swings Lake Dam. We're limited by how much water we can let out of the dam during heavy rain situations because of these undersized culverts. We worked using capital reserve engineering dollars to prepare this grant application. We were denied a couple of years in a row, but we were persistent and fine tuned our application. So, this $611,000 is a huge investment in our community of federal funds and we'll use the matching funds of $67,000 from the Bridge and Culvert, Capital Reserve Fund. And so, very exciting for the community, more grant dollars to accomplish important infrastructure.
Yeah, very exciting. So, I'd like to make a motion to accept and expend the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Funds for Barrington Lakeside Oaks Drive Culvert in the amount of $611,707.50.
We need to do.
Yep.
We need to do public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, if there's no further discussion from the board, I'm gonna go ahead and open public comments since this is a public hearing. And nobody in studio or online, so go ahead.
Motion, motion as previously stated.
Second. Second, my round.
Roll call.
Article five.
Cap yellow eye.
Sakosha.
Okay, and also, do you need to open public comment on the motion to expend $68,000? Okay, make a motion to expend up to $68,000 for Barrington Lakeside Oaks Drive Culvert from the Barrington Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve Fund as the town's 10% match to the grant?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Article five.
Cap yellow eye.
Gibson eye.
Sakosha. Okay, so C, Acceptance of Housing Opportunity Planning Grant. So, this one is a $100,000 grant with no match requirements needed. And this is to go towards our master plan. There's some things in the master plan that it will not cover, but be outlined shortly. Any further discussion from the board?
No, I would move to accept the Housing Opportunity Planning Grant Funds for Review and to the tune of $100,000. Pretty excited about this.
Yep, we just gotta do public comment on this one, too. So, once again, gonna open up public comment. If there's anybody in studio or online that would like to make a comment, please do. Seeing nobody online or in studio, gonna go ahead and close public comment. And.
So moved.
So moved.
And a second.
Roll call.
Article five.
Cap yellow eye.
Gibson eye.
Sakosha.
And thank you for the grant writing expertise. It's excellent that we're receiving these funds.
Absolutely, you're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Consent Agenda as amended.
I'm happy that we are going to vote on trick or treat and finalize Halloween trick or treating on Halloween. I'll move to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Article five.
Cap yellow eye.
Gibson eye.
Sakosha. Okay, Appointments. The appointments, I believe I said them last week expiring in 2025. Do we feel the need to go back over those guys?
Nope, just stay tuned. We've been touching base with all of the folks with appointment terms expiring, figuring out who's still interested and who isn't. So, we'll start putting that list together in early 2025 so we know where our vacancies are going to be. We've already had some interest from the community in joining some of these boards, committees and commissions that have full seats. So, if we have vacancies, we kind of have a rolodex to turn to, but we'll be able to put the call out to the community at that time as well.
Excellent.
Okay, staff report, TA.
Fantastic, so we did December work anniversaries at the first meeting in December and I included the strategic planning goals updates here and we'll continue to work on these in early 2025. Some of these projects are ongoing. I don't know if the Select Board has given any thought to our meetings in early January and kind of how we want to recap that. I thought at the last meeting or talked about potentially taking all or a portion of a meeting in early 2025 and discussing kind of a recap of our goals, separate than another goal setting session, but just kind of make some recommendations for the next board sometime maybe in February or early March. Select Board open to that? I don't think it'll probably take a whole meeting. I think we could probably do it at part of a meeting, maybe start early, work on that project and then have a regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, I'm seeing head nods, so I'll, I'll plan on something like that and I'll put a document together that provides a more comprehensive summary to guide the discussion.
Connor, did you give us a calendar for 2024?
For '25, yes.
Correct, '25, okay. I just need to get that on my calendar.
I will send out, I don't think we have sent out calendar invitations. That's kind of the easy way to just accept it to your calendar. Through March, the next Select Board meetings are at the bottom of the agenda in the Town Administrator Report, so I'm just looking. I think we have both meetings in March on that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Through March 17th, but we'll send out calendar invitations. It's about time to do that anyway, so thanks for the reminder. And I think that was all.
Okay, MOAT.
We have a voluntary change address, a highway grant agreement and an intent to cut all for wet signatures. I think they're working around the table.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, on to old business exemption and credit changes, discussion from the board. At the September 9th meeting, the Select Board, we were asked any additional information we'd like to review and consider any changes to the exemption and credits for the 2025 town meeting.
So, I reviewed that in detail. The list we had went through 2023. Have we seen anything drastic that we need to know about for 2024?
The Barrington data was 2024 in the exemption credit analysis that went out. There were links to the prior year exemption credit analyses in the beginning for comparison purposes.
Yeah, I went to that, okay.
Okay, yeah, so this document, you should have a printed copy and was linked in the Town Administrator Report dated December 4th, 2024. So, that has tax year 2024 data for Barrington. So, that will tell you our enrollment and our exemption and credit levels. The data compared, and maybe this is a confusion, but the data compared to at the state and county level is 2023 data. So, there, the state doesn't publish the data for 2024 for the state and county until next year. And so, we compare where we are now in terms of exemptions and credit levels to the state and county for 2023.
And that's what's linked to your TA report, because that's what I reviewed.
It all is.
Okay.
Yep, so there's a, there's a separate link to the, the data source for the state and county data and that's the 2023 data. There's separate links to the exemption and credit analysis dating back to 2018. And so, the, the content later on, Barrington's enrollment data is all 2024 data. Of course, it's our data, we can keep track of that. The real headline here is that Barrington is at or above the county and state average for every one of our exemption and credits.
Yeah.
Including the income and asset levels. And so, I don't think, looking at the data, if our goal is to, is to be ahead of the pack, at or ahead of the pack for exemption and credit levels, I don't think the data strongly points at adjusting any of those levels. That doesn't mean that we don't need to or can't, but that's what the data shows.
I'm happy with being in the middle of the pack as opposed to forefront.
So, we have had an increase to 21 service-related total disability exemptions. So, we started out when we first passed that so that those who had service-related total disability through the VA would receive $4,000 plus the $750 credit. Since that time, we have increased the number of residents that are utilizing that exemption from 32 to 53, which would suggest to me that certainly Barrington is a community where people are aware that that tax exemption is present and available. And we may be attracting people who see that as a reason to migrate to our community.
Yeah, and so, the community, the residents in Barrington, through their votes over the last number of years, have demonstrated their support for the veterans in our community and maybe the veterans that come to our community, right?
Yes.
And so, one of the things that I, I think it's important to close the loop on for residents is the growth that we've seen over the years in the tax rate and the cost to residents to live in the community is mostly borne by the added expenditures of the town, the school and the county. But there are also a portion of that that's borne by the exemptions and credits that we offer to the community, an important level of support for those that we as a community come together and decide that we want to support with their property tax burden. As it relates to the credits, our credits from 2019 to 2024 have doubled. The cost of those credits have doubled. So, that accounts for about $300,000 worth of added costs every year for covering those credits. So, that, the impact of that $300,000 is the same as increasing our budget $300,000, you know, higher than prior years. And so, residents, I believe, made those decisions, eyes wide open, to support the members of our community available that have, are eligible, excuse me, for exemptions and credits. But it's important to close the loop on the cost and the impact, just the same as, you know, raising taxes through additional appropriations, so.
Yeah, I just think we need to be aware. I mean, that is of the growth that we're seeing in the exemptions and the transfer of that tax to other residents. One-third of that is happening based on that one vote. So, I just think we need to be aware that we can sometimes make decisions that are best and that there is a long-term impact.
So, I'm not hearing any support for recommended changes.
No, absolutely not.
Yep.
Great. I think Barrington should be proud to provide that support. I just think from an analysis perspective, we should be paying attention.
Excellent. On to finalizing the '25 operating budget and proposal for war, for the warrant for January 6th. '25 public hearing.
So, we, this is largely procedural. At the last meeting, we met with the Budget Committee, went over all the numbers. The big decisions the Select Board made at that meeting, we're pulling those two separate warrant articles back into the operating budget based on how it would be most successful to support those needs for the community. You have updated printed documents in your packet and also linked here. Tiffany also went through and updated all of the budget online, Budget Binder documents to reflect the current state of the budget. So, what we're looking to do tonight is to take that operating budget and those separate warrant articles and finalize them by vote for the public hearing, which we'll have on January 6th. That will be our next meeting. So, we'll advertise that public hearing in the paper. The work is largely done, but between now and then, we'll prepare additional ways to describe what we're trying to accomplish so we can present that to the community. And then, if that's our only public hearing for the budget in the warrant, then that will, the next step in the process is the deliberative session. If we receive petitioned warrant articles that are financial in nature, we'll have a separate public hearing on the holiday in January. I have that tentative date on the calendar, but I'll send it to you. And that would be the only additional hearing that we would have. So, there's a letter that you have a copy of from the Library Trustee Chair, who's here tonight to talk about some of the recommended changes from the Budget Committee in the library operating budget, if you're interested in entertaining that.
Susan, would you like to come up?
Jim, Mr. Sakosha, this Dan Mantrack, I'm on Teams here. I had to do some cooking this evening to, after our long day at the hospital, so I'll check in through Teams if I may.
For sure.
Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thank you. Hope your day went as well as it could.
Yes, thank you, it did.
I sent a memo to you folks and through Connor, and has everybody gotten that, Connor?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, I hate it when people read to me exactly what I've got in front of me, so I'm not gonna do that. I outlined the three areas that the ABC made some changes in that we were asking you to reconsider, at least some or all of that. The first one on the list is the library website. It's not a huge amount and again, we made our, I guess, argument here. This was not something I recall being discussed at ABC when Liz and I were there, so we didn't really have this discussion with, with them. And, and I'm really not sure why they decided to eliminate that from the budget. It's pretty straightforward. It's not a huge amount, but, and we have been with Piperwebs, as have many, many libraries in the state for decades. It's a small operation and they really have kept fees low for libraries for a long time. But some people decided they want to retire and he was not able to sell the business, so apparently the owner has really reached out to a number of other providers to be able to help offer options to those libraries. And as Liz indicated, these are really her notes, she went ahead and chose the, the least expensive one. And so, we're asking that that be restored to the operating budget. The, while we do have the Technology Capital Reserve, we were really saving that for some of the larger, like servers, some larger cost items that are facing us as opposed to something at this level. Do you want to just go on with each of these or?
Well, I mean, I guess I'm happy to provide insight from the Budget Committee meeting. You know, I think that unfortunately, the Budget Committee had the challenge of looking at a, you know, nearly 10% budget increase in the warrant articles and worked diligently to find opportunities for savings where they could. As related to the library budget, there was some discussion about what costs were related to the library building project or should be more attributed to the library building project and where there were other opportunities for funding certain projects. As it relates to the web host migration, it wasn't clear to the Budget Committee if that was a project that was necessitated by the move or not.
And it is not.
So, the, the additional details are helpful for that. But there was also a sentiment that there were other funding sources with the Technology Capital Reserve that could fund that one-time expenditure in a, in an operating budget, the 2025 operating budget, which has a lot of additional needs, a lot of additional growth. So, that was the recommendation from the, from the Budget Committee and kind of the reasoning behind that.
And actually, when we met with the ABC, we had lengthy discussion about, and they had a lot of questions about how will the Technology Capital Reserve, how has that been used, how do we plan using it? And Liz presented them with quite a long laundry list that amounted like $47,000 in technology expenditures and some of which, quite honestly, appears to have been woefully deferred investment in updating our technology, so we're dealing with some of that right now. With respect to the technology services themselves.
Yeah, just one more thing on that. So, the Budget Committee did recommend increasing the Library Technology Capital Reserve warrant article from 3,000 to 5,000. And so, I mean, it could be a, if 3,000 was what was recommended by the library and library trustees, it could be that that additional $2,000 is earmarked for the project. And so, that could be a compromise between what's recommended from the Budget Committee and what you hear from the library trustees and library director.
And we appreciated that. We did not ask for that. We did not initiate that request, would be happy to have it, but we felt that voters had been very generous in passing the bond and we were just sensitive to, to the cost that we're incurring. With respect to the technology services, we've used a company called Back Bay Networks, which is, again, a pretty, has been pretty cost-effective for the library and will continue to use them through our stay-at-the-old building. We had thought that trying to migrate a lot of those kinds of services like security and technology to the same vendor that the town is using would have, well, we hoped it would have some financial, like we'd get better pricing, but we also thought it made some logical sense in that. The $10,800 sort of knocked our socks off as well to go from, you haven't done the math, but almost, what, $900 a month from when we're paying right now, something like $395 a month. Clearly, with that larger building, we are gonna have more computer stations, so there's gonna be more, potentially more maintenance service that we're gonna need, so it seems reasonable that it would increase. So, in any event, we accepted that the ABC felt that that was a huge jump and they wanted to reduce it down to the level we're currently at, more or less, with Back Bay. We, so that basically means what we have done is we are going to use Block 5 for our telephone system. We're trying to work on transitioning that now. If you call the library, you only hear about every other word that staff say many times, so we're trying to get that resolved. But we basically have sort of basically abandoned going with Block 5 for the full services and ongoing support. Connor asked me in an email an hour or so ago, is this related to transition? My understanding is this, and Liz is on vacation this week, so I'm not gonna chase her down in Atlanta, I think she is. But my understanding is we had a lengthy, detailed bid, if you want to call it that, from Block 5 and she teased out $10,008 as being the amount that was related to support. That may be high this year because it's in a new building, I'm not sure. But basically, we're in the process, we've gone back to Back Bay and are getting quotes from them on new servers and so on. And we're gonna be content to stay with them as our vendor. We don't, they're supposed to get to us in the next week a, their detailed proposal. So, at this point, what Liz was suggesting and, and we support is to reduce that amount to, I think it was like 5,000 or some number like that for that month rather than the 10. But before January 6th, we'll be able to provide to you a final number as to what we have for a contract from them and then we could make yet another adjustment on that one. As far as the library building improvements and maintenance.
Here, just, we'll just pause on that one for a second, if that's okay?
Pardon?
And we'll just pause on that one for a second, if that's okay?
Oh, sure.
Is there, what is the IT budget for the building project?
I cannot, I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
There, there is an IT budget, though.
The, the, there was something, there is, but I cannot remember the number. When we were trying to cut back the project budget as much as possible in order to get the bond as low as possible, we cut back some of those areas, like furniture, security, and I can't remember exactly what was in there for IT. I know that was one that we had trimmed back, figuring, we'll see what we can do.
And I think from the budget, what the Budget Committee was trying to parse out, parse out, excuse me, was what of the added IT managed service provider costs are related to moving into the new building, getting, you know, settled in, there's going to be things that aren't working. It's going to take a fair amount of effort in those first few months to make sure everything works. What's related to that and what is regular, ongoing IT support, which is necessary for any organization that doesn't have in-house IT specialty? And so, the, even in the explanation, the, you know, we are expecting the maintenance fee will be higher because of the need for troubleshooting during the first few months of the new location. And so, I think from the Budget Committee's perspective, I think what they are, what they are recommending to the Select Board is that only those costs for ongoing IT support are in the operating budget. And if there's a cost, which there is a cost, to move the technology to the new facility, to make sure it's up and running, to stick around, you know, we had a pretty substantial budget for that in this building and Block 5 was here, you know, three or four days, full days, just going around to all the offices, making sure people's phones and computers and printers and everything was working. That does cost money, no question. I think the Budget Committee's concern was that that should be a, a budget item in the project budget and not the operating budget. And so, I don't know, you know, I guess unless or until you hear back from Back Bay, I guess it's not clear, but the estimation in this number seems to include some of that break fix from the move into the new building. That doesn't mean the Select Board has to agree with that analysis of what should be in the project budget versus what should be in the operating budget. But the, the recommendation wasn't arbitrary to the extent that, hey, let's just, you know, cut this back. And if that means that the library has to go, only has budget to go with a lower-cost alternative for IT support, you know, I think the, what the Budget Committee was looking at is this year isn't necessarily the year to spend more for, or to add those services because the budget's so big.
And I, I understand, unfortunately, I think when we were putting together that project budget, well, we were really focused on getting the bottom line as low as possible, but we hadn't even explored Block 5. That was a decision made later, so we didn't really have the information to consider at that time. I think the other, part of the cost, as I recall with, with Block 5 is things like we have to replace some servers and there was something related to a firewall. And their quotes on those more hardware kind of items as opposed to just transitioning were significantly higher than I think we can comfortably sustain, so that's why we're looking at changing that over. So.
Did Block 5 give an indication how much of it was because of the transition and what the subsequent year might look like?
I, I don't have that information for you. Why I allow somebody to take a vacation in December is beyond me.
Just tilt your microphone a little bit, just pointing up.
So, I don't have that, I know Liz has that because we had very detailed proposals from them. I just don't have that myself on hand. So, again, we can get back to you and would be happy to get back to you with a more detailed breakdown on that. And I know we have the January 6th public hearing that if need be, you know, we can, we can, I'm trying to work within your schedule as well, so.
Yes, I mean, the, really, the changes should happen now, right? So, January, on January 6th, the budget can go down, but if the budget goes up, then we hold another hearing. So, we, we can't increase the budget from what we notice for ahead of the public hearing without re-noticing and holding another public hearing. I mean, I think we're doing well in the process, right? We have a nearly finalized budget. The plan was to finalize it tonight and bring it to that public hearing and let that be the public hearing where we present the kind of final product to the community.
I have a question before we go on to maintenance. You mentioned that there would be upcoming $47,000 worth of servers and things. Can you just expand on that?
Again, I don't have the list with me, but Liz had gone through the need to update both servers and, and like the patron computers that we have, a lot of those. She had done a whole listing with when were they bought, what was the age of some of these things, some went back to 2009. So, pretty out-of-date equipment. So, it's not related to moving per se, although we will have more, some more computer stations at the, the new library.
And I think from the Budget Committee emphasized and recognized the need for increased or new technology hardware. So, and I think it's, moving to a new building is a great opportunity to start fresh and have new firewalls and servers. That's what we did at this building. The, the budget, the IT budget for moving into this building included all of that hardware to, it was almost $100,000 of new servers and firewall. So, we bundled that, which isn't the only way to do it, but I think from the Budget Committee's perspective is some of. some of that, some of that hardware, the need for new servers and firewalls, maybe that's something that shouldn't have been cut out of the budget initially, if that it was such a need, you know, a good time to accomplish those tasks. And the Budget Committee does want to work with the library trustees to find a way to increase the Technology Capital Reserve contributions to be able to fund that technology plan. There's no question of the need, it's just how to pay for it. And I think those, at present, I don't think there's any plan to pay for the servers and firewalls needed for the library.
That's all going to come out of, well, actually, we have to replace the firewall immediately because that's one of the reasons we're having such telephone problems. So that has already been ordered out of this year's budget. But basically, we were expecting to, any other hardware is going to come out of the library capital reserve as well.
Balance now is like 13,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll see what, how we make out with the contingency funds in the building project. You know, there's a number of things, I want to say, I'm not sure I would have done differently, at least from my perspective, because we really wanted to get that dollar amount to like $3 million with, for the bond for the library, and we accomplished that. But we made some sacrifices and decided we will, we will do, or the foundation will do fundraising, write grants, and see if we can supplement it. And what we can't, we'll just work at it over time. So, I guess my recommendation would still be, because you, from what Connor just said, we can lower this further when we get a final number, I'd rather, I'd rather see this at least come back somewhat from the 3,000. And I think Liz was suggesting adding 2,500 to that. If the quote we get in from Back Bay is less than that, then we're fine.
We want to talk about maintenance in the library.
The next one?
Yeah.
The next one certainly was an area where the ABC said they felt that landscaping work, garden work, should be, have been included in the project budget. It was not included in the project budget. We have, over the years, done minimal landscaping at the old library, the current building on Ramsdale Lane, and I'm sure you've all been there, so you've all seen what that kind of looks like. A lot of that was done over the years with the library purchasing the mulch or purchasing something, and volunteers came forward and did all the labor, did most of the labor. A couple of years ago, and this had not been kept up well the last several years, a couple of years ago, we actually, at the end of the year, hired, I say at the end of the year in the fall, hired a company to come in with mulch and to trim back bushes and get it back a little bit under control. And I think we spent somewhere between 1,500 and $2,000 to do that at that library. I drove into the new library building today to see what are we really looking at. There's not, we're not planning to make changes in the landscaping, actually, because we want a low-maintenance facility, something attractive but low-maintenance, and that's what it pretty much is now. Shrubs do need to be trimmed back, and then, you know, fresh mulch in those areas that need mulching is what we're looking for. So the, and we are not going to be doing any landscape work or mulching at the old library, because everything's going to get, you know, dug up and, as that gets renovated, once the library moves out. So, we're looking to at least have restored the level of funding that we've had in the past and cut back the request in this to restore, instead of the 2,500, to at least try to put in maybe 1,500 in that line item. Didn't, we did not include and did not have the concept that we would be asking the construction management firm to hire landscapers and do that. They will be leaving the site, you know, clean and in decent shape, but not bringing in any landscape activity. The only thing that we have done right already out of the project budget is there were some river birches up near the building, very attractive, but we had two clumps of those removed because they were leaning over the roof and not helping out the roof at all. And the tree service, I thought we could save some, I love trees, one of the clumps, but he said, that's going to take out one of your street lamps in time. So we basically just spent several thousand dollars of project funds to remove those and also to take down several dead pine trees that could have posed a hazard, but are on the 125 side.
The Budget Committee conversation was pretty simple, that this is an opportunity, there shouldn't be any landscaping needs, the project construction is happening in the middle of the year, they should clean up the landscaping as part of the project on the way out, and if we need to pay landscaping costs in future years, you know, by all means, but an opportunity for some savings in the 2025 budget. The budget, I think the Budget Committee took exception with the budget narrative explanation, which said, and I'm paraphrasing, but basically like cleaning up the landscaping after construction activities. And I think from the Budget Committee's perspective, they read that to say, well, that should be part of the project, not a separate operating cost. The added details of the, you know, ongoing landscape needs anyways, I think the Budget Committee's feeling is just that, that for, this is a good year where we shouldn't have landscape costs because we're leaving one building and moving into, you know, a renovated project in another building. So I think that was the motivation for the recommendation.
Any discussion from the board?
I recall reading the meeting minutes, they had requested all of the information in the meeting, and there was a period of time where there was quite a gap in getting the information back to them. Do we feel that their decision-making had anything to do with the timing of their waiting for the information?
I don't think all of it was related.
It wasn't at the meeting, but I read the meeting minutes.
So the part of the challenge was the library budget changed twice during the budget review process.
Okay.
And so, in the first review, in the first change from what was originally submitted, the budget increased $18,000, $20,000-ish, and then in the second iteration, there were some increases, but there was a net decrease of...
We eliminated the custodial position.
$11,000 or $12,000. And so, what the Budget Committee, the outstanding items the Budget Committee had asked for is when those changes happened, the Budget Committee asked to see updated narrative documents to better understand those changes. They had that by their final recommendation meeting, and they had also requested the capital plan for the Technology Capital Reserve. And that's where it came back with a list of $42,000 worth of expenditures, and the Budget Committee said, well, there's $13,000 in there now, the request is $3,000, there's no really plan to pay for this $42,000 worth of things, and we'd like to see that plan in the future, you know, like maybe a more aggressive contribution to the capital reserve, whatever the situation may be. So, yeah, did, I don't think that, I don't think this, the Budget Committee made their recommendation based on lack of information. I think they had the information they had asked for. Susan and Liz were at the last Budget Committee meeting and were able to address some of the topics. I think technology was one that was discussed when you were there and the landscaping.
That was the focus of it as well, and we, the library has a very detailed, multi-page technology, long-term technology plan that Liz updated. It might have been, I think, last updated, maybe just before Liz came on. So she went really through that and updated it and was able to detail for them. I didn't bring a copy with me, but she was able to detail for them, both software, hardware, systems, changes that were needed, as well as, as I mentioned, the age of last updates or purchase of materials.
So I don't see this in the Budget Finder, that narrative. It wouldn't have been provided to us, or is it?
Yes, it would have been in the last packet. We had, we appended those updated documents to the ABC minutes, so last week's packet, and linked to the Town Administrator Report there.
Have them in my car.
I think, so I think something other, something else important to keep in mind is our operating budget in every department operates with a surplus, right? We can't spend, we can't overspend our budget. And I give a lot of credit to the library trustees in, both currently and in the past, because the library trustees do not reappropriate the surplus in their budget and spend for discretionary purposes, right? The library has experienced a tremendous amount of vacancies in the last year, and that's resulted in tens of thousands of dollars of surplus operating budget.
$30,000 this year.
And so, and it's probably going to be more than that.
Okay.
And so, I think the, these are relatively small numbers, and the conversations that Amy and I had with a lot of department heads in trimming back and cutting budget numbers back to what is prior-year expenditures, even though we know that there are cost escalations, is that we know that some of these individual budget lines might be overspent based on the needs in 2025. But reasonably, we can tighten our belt and accomplish the needs of the department, and maybe that surplus in 2025 is a little bit smaller. Now, that has risks, right? We trim that down too much and unanticipated needs come up, and we have to attend to those. And that's where the Select Board's Incident Fund comes in, right? We have other funding sources available to step in, and I think the real headline of the work the Budget Committee did in the last year was trying to trim that down as much as possible, relying on the fact that there will be some surplus that we can spend into if we need to. And so, you know, most of these numbers are relatively small numbers in the scheme of the overall budget. And it's, you know, not dissimilar to the nickel-and-diming that happened in other department budget reductions throughout the process.
Yep.
Recommendations, discussion. Danan, are you with us? Do you want to, do you have any comments or discussion?
I'm sorry, no, no questions from me, thank you.
So I'm thinking about the technology coming out of the Technology Reserve, but I do think taking the maintenance for landscaping out, I would put back at least 1,000 of that, because every building requires some maintenance landscaping.
They move in in July.
That'd be, but they're going to need to do something.
I'd also suggest, I understand Barrington Bloomers aren't available for the mulch spreading, but the high school students for Oyster River and Co. Brown are constantly looking for service hours that must be completed in order to graduate, and I think hosting a day where we would allow those hours to be utilized is an interesting way to pull the kids from the community in and make their, it's very, very hard if you're under the age of 18 to find many organizations that allow the teens to actually get their hours done. It's sort of a struggle over the years, running nonprofits, trying to find them things to do.
The other thing, as a reminder, the Barrington Bloomers, the garden club, has for years helped out with pulling weeds and things like that and helping to maintain the gardens, and they informed the library formally that they would not be able to continue that, not just with the new building, but as of now, they really don't have the...
Bandwidth.
The wherewithal. Obviously, they're maintaining the little town garden and a lot of other projects, so.
Final determinations by the Select Board and finalization of the budget?
The library, the building budget is ahead of, you're more in the black, right? And there's a contingency buffer as well, that some of these could be drawing on?
Not sure I heard exactly what you said there. Are you talking about the contingencies?
Yeah, you have like a buffer in the building budget for overruns.
That's the contingency. We have a contingency, which is, we have spent some of that already, like taking those trees down, and whatever isn't spent in that can be spent on, whether it's the technology. There's other things that we didn't include in the budget that would like to address, like new lighting for the parking lot, but that's not, we didn't budget that initially. So those things are going to have to wait until we're furthering the project. The project is, by the way, on time, and so far on budget, things are looking pretty, pretty good so far. They're going to be putting insulation in in the next week, so it'll be more comfortable to visit. And I'd encourage, you know, we should probably arrange a little walkthrough for Selectmen.
Yeah, the point I was making not so eloquently was that you're on budget and actually maybe even ahead, like, it sounds like there's been some cost savings and some of, there was some unintended savings by some contractors.
Unintended or unexpected savings, as an example, was in replacing the roof, the metal valleys turned out to be reusable, you know, we didn't have to replace those, and that saved a couple thousand dollars. It's not huge money, but it's better than having to dip in. We did discover, when all stuff was coming down, that we had a structural engineer in, and that identified the need for some additional steel beams in areas we were taking down walls. But, so, you know, we're into the contingency a bit, but probably maybe $30,000 so far, so.
So for me, my initial reaction to this is, we tasked the Advisory Budget Committee with hours and hours and hours of volunteerism in reviewing the budget, asking the questions, and there has already been one situation where we have had to reverse one of their recommendations for a full FTE and where it gets placed. I don't know that you can ask a group of volunteers to do this hard work and then disregard their recommendations. I don't think anything that's in here is catastrophic to the library's budget. There's a $27,000 increase that's being asked for, but there's already a $30,000 leftover...
Surplus.
...surplus from last year, and so I think there's two things that I look at. Would this leave the library unable to operate? And I don't think that's the case. And also, would it offend these volunteers that have done the hard work of combing line item for line item through this very voluminous budget?
Excellent points.
The point earlier about the warrant, the capital reserve, we'd had these discussions last week, too, because, you know, putting things on capital reserve is kind of, I mean, one way it's savings, but it's also hard because what's your real budget every year? And, you know, trying not to stray from that. I mean, that being said, it's also a way, as the other side, to give the voters a choice in what they want to see and stuff, too. So, putting another, you know, in addition onto the warrant, not be, it'd be easier than into the regular budget.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And the capital reserve is a tool, is a great tool for one-time costs, right? So in a budget, a $2,000 one-time cost isn't a huge deal, right? But generally, one-time costs where you have to appropriate it one year and then you don't have to appropriate it the next year, that's better in a, you know, one-time expenditure tool like a capital reserve, so you're not increasing, decreasing the budget year one, year two. So, that kind of feeds into what you're saying.
So you're talking about doing a separate warrant article for these three pieces, or adding an additional amount?
Taking it from 3,000, what was it, to 5?
3,000 to 5,000.
It's a rate for 5, isn't it, for this year?
Yeah, the Budget Committee recommended increasing from 3,000 to 5,000.
Which will immediately leave them with 18,000 to expend for technology.
Well, assuming that passes.
If it passes, yeah.
Yep. And if not, there's 13,000 balance there.
I don't think it's been rejected yet by the residents of the town. I think they see the value in it.
The, so, I hear what you're saying, and I understand that as far as the transition of the website. The support or the annual cost for a service contract, we don't have yet, and from what I've just heard you say, we could, you could decrease the amount that's in the proposed budget, but if we increased it at all, and this would be, I'm talking about, you know, whatever the annual contract turns out to be for staying with...
Is there a reason we don't have that for budget?
Pardon?
Why don't we have that figure?
Because we thought we were going to be with Block Five, and we had that number. That number is, you know, I have to assume that that 10,000 is what they think is going to be, what they need, more or less, on an ongoing basis. If, and as I say, the hardware expenses through them were significantly higher. So we are at a point where we're saying we're going to go to this other vendor.
You're going to put an RFP out and...
We are staying with the existing vendor.
Okay.
So they're basically giving us a fresh quote on things that we were not going to them for a quote because we were, we had thought we were going to go with Block Five. So that's why they have just, you know, really, this all came out in the ABC So that's why they have just, you know, really, this all came out in the ABC in the last ten days or something like that.
And they haven't been able to get you a quote yet.
Liz met with them at the new site, so they could see, you know, where the IT closet's gonna be and so on. They're getting, they're supposed to be getting their bid to us sometime, I think, this week. This'll be at, back next week, and our trustees are meeting next Tuesday. So that's the point at which I expect we'll have more information. I would rather have a little bit more in that line item and come back to you and say we don't need that much than having, that is not a cost we'd wanna eat out of the capital reserve for maintenance service.
Well, I think the, the biggest thing here is to say, okay, the, the new library, the, the monthly bill for our services is X. And that's with all the new hardware that's already bought and paid for elsewhere, but that's just to maintain the system, the service that they provide. I think that's the biggest thing in question, is how much of that service is included of starting it up and getting new hardware and new parts and pieces and saying, hey, we're hopeful, where we're not in the red on the project, that, you know, that there may be more monies down the road that could incorporate that.
Perhaps the town could be looking at, you know, as a bigger buying block, right? You know, if the town is using, and then the library's gonna use, like, they can, that could be more competitive if we wanna put it out to bid.
Oh, absolutely. And, and so, I mean, there's plenty to talk about here. I think we need to focus on finalizing the budget and moving on, right? These are small numbers, insignificant in a ten million dollar budget. I think we've spent probably enough time. As it relates to technology, the, the, when the town switched to Rockport Technology Services, and then again, when we switched to Block Five, we approached the library to, to switch then. And the economies of scale don't necessarily come in the individual maintenance costs, right? There's, and economies of scale, they're in town more and things like that. It really, the, the benefit to the community comes from the redundancy and the resiliency of, of the hardware, right? So we have a server room here that has servers and firewalls that are redundant in the police department. And we have ISP internet service provider at the Public Safety Building in here. We have dark fiber connection, which runs right by the new library, that, so if one of these sites goes down for any reason, we can spin back up on the other site instantly. And so you don't have that redundancy. All the hardware still costs the same, right? All those components would still be necessary at the new library. But if we get them connected, managed by the same IT company, then we can benefit from that resiliency and the redundancy. So, you know, we, we're sharing the same bandwidth for internet service. So those, the, there are plenty of benefits to that, right? And I think it would have been great if the library had transitioned earlier, when we were in the same building and, and all the rest. There, there, it does make some sense to transition when you're moving into the new building. It seems like that, that could have been, should have been, a consideration for the project budget, to make sure that there was money to accomplish that task in the transition. And so, but again, as it relates to what's in front of us right now, which is the budget, we need the Select Board to finalize the budget ahead of the public hearing.
So for two reasons. Like I mentioned, I will not likely vote in a way that will be offensive to these volunteers on Advisory Budget Committee, but also hearing that the project is moving at a great timeline, has a two hundred thousand dollar contingency, of which you've used just a small portion of. I don't think that it's going to leave the library without the technology services that it needs. And therefore, I think we should proceed with approving the budget with the recommendations of the Advisory Budget Committee.
There's a member of the Advisory Budget Committee here that's been listening and has something to say. Farida, if you wanna step up to the microphone and just press it so it's green and offer whatever comments you have to the group.
Sure. Hello, everyone. I'm Farida Fugazi, the new member of the Advisory Budget Committee. Okay, so one of the reasons that actually we talked so much about the technology, especially servers, while I'm in technology, I understand your needs, definitely, because two thousand nine is like, you know, in terms of technology, it's like, we're talking about dinosaurs.
Yeah.
But the important point that we were trying to make in the, you know, Advisory Committee is that when you, you know, bring your project costs and your operation costs, you don't want to put your operation costs in the project cost and vice versa. And that is the point that, you know, we're trying to make, that while, you know, the servers are absolutely necessary to have, but you cannot put it on the operation cost, because it's not an operation cost. It's one-time, like, project cost. So it's like, you know, we just wanted to make sure that for the future, you know, when you are making your budget and all those things, you have to consider in a project, from a project management perspective, that what, what goes where. And, and also, like, you know, for the website, I mean, it's twelve hundred dollars, it's not much, but it's like, the, what we saw as not necessary as the moving, you know, like, I mean, it's on cloud, you can do it later. So it was not a necessity item that you'd, you just have to do it right now.
Understanding.
So these are the kind of things that, you just wanted to clarify a little bit.
Thank you, Farida.
Thank you for sharing.
And good to meet you.
Being here.
Nice to meet you as well.
I can actually see how this committee functions, right?
Okay, so we have a motion to proceed as the presented ABC.
I don't think she made a motion.
No, but I would. I would make a motion to finalize the 2025 operating budget and warrant as reviewed and adjusted by the Advisory Budget Committee at the December 2nd, 2024 Select Board Meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Article five.
Manstrek, aye.
Yellimay.
Gibson, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business?
New business. Would there be any members of the Barrington PD here that would like to come up?
Probably not necessary. I mean, if you want, if you wanna report out, we can have it. Were you coming to present on the sidebar?
I was just coming in case I was needed.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. So we have a, we have a proposed sidebar agreement to the police collective bargaining agreement that the police union, consistent with the existing contract, asked to open to discuss wages. We met, Select Person Gibson, Vice Chair Gibson, joined those negotiations. The result of that process was a proposal by the union, which we're presenting to you all tonight, to add an additional step for union members. And so the data that, that was presented, that resulted in this recommendation to the Select Board, was a, an acceleration, a dramatic acceleration in police wages across the region in incomparable communities, where although wages maybe town-wide have slipped a little bit over the last couple of years since the wage study, it seems like the wages in law enforcement have slipped more. And in talking with folks in the industry, it's clear that police departments across the state have been playing a lot of catch-up. So every new contract, there's usually big jumps. And so Vice Chair Gibson, myself, and the police chief and deputy chief, we saw this as a potential opportunity to bridge that gap a little bit, so that when we do renegotiate a full contract next year, hopefully a three-year contract, we'd have, we wouldn't have as much ground to make up in that one year, in the first year, kind of a dramatic increase. So right now, the 2025 operating budget, the initial proposal included a six and a half percent increase for police union members. The proposal is that it would be a total of 10% for police union members. That would be structured as a step increase in the 2025 operating budget, and that's what you see in the numbers in front of you. And then the proposal for the separate warrant article, those cost items of the sidebar, that would be a 3% cost of living adjustment and that additional step. And so the step that's in the operating budget is also in the default budget, that's guaranteed, that's a negotiated cost item. The cost items that would go before voters in a separate warrant article is what's presented to you, and that's a sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollar cost for the union members. I will point out that there are two union members who have already reached the top of their scale. And so this proposal includes the equivalent, as a discretionary top-of-scale bonus, the, the equivalent of a 10% increase for them. Being a discretionary top-of-scale bonus, that isn't an ongoing cost, those wages would likely be adjusted in a wage study or negotiated in the future. And then the final component of that was an increase in our outside detail pay. And so that is something that has grown in the region since our last contract, no direct cost to the town.
I just want us to be sure that when we're approaching the new study for the total rewards, and we're looking at benefits, and we're looking at salary, that we keep in mind that we have those two individuals at the top of scale, and that we have figured out how to include them in the 10% in some manner. Okay?
Absolutely.
So I would make a motion to approve the tentative sidebar agreement as presented and include the cost items in the 2025 town meeting warrant.
Second. Roll call.
Article five.
Yellimay.
Gibson, aye.
Manstrek, aye.
And special thank you to Vice Chair Gibson for being along the process. I was glad to have his guidance and wisdom in the process.
Glad to be part of it.
But one additional new business?
Yes, one additional new business, and that is B, and that is the appropriation for the last forty thousand for the ARPA funds.
Yes, and so back in July, I presented the Select Board with a accounting of our ARPA balance, and where we had spent that money and where we had encumbered that money. And I'm glad to report that some of the encumbrances that we had, we were able to accomplish more efficiently than anticipated. And so the money that we had encumbered and said was set aside for a certain project, for instance, the police accreditation project, we saved money there, certain election costs that we encumbered money for, we pulled out of the 2024 operating budget, we saved money, generator projects and the security projects. So each of these areas, we were able to save some money. And in our recent accounting, there's going to be about forty thousand dollars that is now unencumbered from savings and prior encumbrances and the other expenditures that we've made. And so you'll remember, in October, the Select Board agreed to use the kind of remaining fifty thousand that we had at that time to put towards, it doesn't cover the entire cost, but put towards the security improvements at the community center.
Yes, did we do that?
We did.
We voted on that.
Yes, yeah.
I thought so, because we promised them that.
We had originally earmarked some, and then when we did the capital improvement program funding plan, that was a component of that funding plan. And so with this forty thousand dollars, the timing is good, because the next facility that we moved to in our proposals for security improvements was the Highway Department and Transfer Station facility. So we have proposals there now. I will tell you that the proposals are higher than they will be in the end. We will need to pare that down to meet a project budget, but they will certainly be more than forty thousand dollars worth of work. And we have some other funding sources proposed in the 2025 operating budget to be able to complete that project. But my proposal to you all tonight is that we take that remaining balance, which will be close to forty thousand dollars, depending on, we have a couple more weeks of election costs to pay, and we'll finalize that number. And my proposal to you all is that we take that money and invest it in the security improvements in the Highway Department Public Transfer Station facility, similar to what we did at the Public Safety Building and the Community Center.
Crazy.
This is our last meeting before the end of the year.
Yes, ma'am.
And this has to be committed by the 31st of December, correct?
It does.
Okay.
Seems reasonable. I hope so.
I'll make a motion to approve, not the tentative sidebar, but I would like to make the motion to a, approve the authorization of the remaining ARPA fund balance, approximately forty thousand dollars to be used for security improvements at the Highway Department and Transfer Station.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Article five.
Manstrek, aye.
Capella, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Sakoshai.
Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, to Select Board Member Reports, Mr. Manstrek, would you like to report out? Are you on a spot, too?
No, I, there's not much, there's not much to add. I'm not sure what the school board presented. Their meeting was mostly some questions on their budget, but basically they've approved their budget. I think it's a one point six above their default budget, maybe it's 2% above their fault, default budget, which is how they compare. It's a pretty good jump, I think almost 7% from last year. You heard the library report. I think you saw in the email today, Mr. Fox is set to begin at the transfer station on the 31st.
Excellent.
That's, that's my report.
Oh, excellent.
All right.
Didn't go to you.
Okay.
Select Person, article.
Nothing to report, other than nine days from now, we have a zoning board meeting that I'm aware of at this time. There is one administrative appeal, one variance before us. If there's any cases besides that, I don't know about them yet.
Select Person, Capella.
Planning Board, we weren't sure if we would have a hearing next week, but we will. So it'll be a working meeting, and we'll have our lawyer there. She had some questions about the wording and the intent of some of the warrant. We, we work in those.
Vice Chair Gibson. We met on Thursday for the Energy Committee. There's some good press releases, if you guys saw on the news, Foster's and Sea Coast Online, I think with the solar panels and the town halls.
NHPR.
NHPR did a story, too, so that's
Yeah, there was some great stuff out there about Barrington. Everyone wants to go.
Visibility. They will not be meeting on the 19th for the holidays. Next meeting is January 2nd, Conservation. Next meeting is going to be in January as well. At that time, first part of January, they're hoping to finally get the ecological study back on the Richardson Dam project.
Oh, good. Really?
Yeah, they've been, it's been a little slow, they're waiting on some hydrologic data to come back.
Right.
But that's supposed to be the January 9th or 11th, so right around there at our next meeting.
Excellent.
Will be discussed.
Excellent. Well, in, with the Parks Rec in combination with the BCDC, with also the great local businesses in town, the soiree was a very cold event, but there was tons of warmth brought by the community, lots of good families having fun down there. I went down for a little bit. The fire pit was a, a huge hit, and to see residents, you know, roasting Rice Krispie treats and marshmallows and whatnot was really cool. And that's what we got going on.
He's a humble guy, but Jim Sakoshia was the, was the brainchild behind that fire pit, and, and suggesting that this would be a great opportunity for community events and gatherings down there. And it was. I mean, you had a fire ring surrounded by adults and older children, and you had kids running around all through the snow and ice, having a blast, and Rec had music going and the inflatables and the lights. And so it's amazing how small of a feature, in the grand scheme of things, right? A six-foot metal ring with a fire in it, how small of a feature can play such a big part in a community event and the excitement around it. And the, the event as a whole was fantastic. There was a 25-minute fireworks display to cap off the night at the end, which was amazing.
Top tier.
Yep, top tier. So definitely
That's up to Sean McGurty on that, too.
Yeah, Sean does, and they, and his, and his wife, they do an amazing job.
That's what makes Barrington special, right? Community events like that make Barrington special, and the opportunity to talk to the community about the Barrington Common property and what we're doing in the town center, people are, are seeing that vision, they're experiencing that vision. We're really moving the needle, and I think that will make those future conversations easier. The Barrington Center Development Committee survey is set to close on January 15th, so we already have hundreds of responses, over 400 responses so far.
Wow, that's excellent.
And we hope to have more, as we, now that we have an end date. And so if, if you talk to anybody that has an idea about what we should or shouldn't do in that area, take the survey, and then that group will, will kind of focus on the bigger picture, what to do next. And so you'll be seeing some report outs from that group.
Yes.
And the first sign for Barrington Commons went up with the tagline from the committee, and I was like, this is, yeah.
Yeah, if you haven't seen that on the entrance to the post office. Yeah, we're gonna get a solar light on that, so we get some exposure at night. But credit to the Rec Director and her team for getting that across the finish line.
Yeah, it was pretty exciting.
Ahead of the event, it was a mad dash, very exciting.
Alrighty, that is it for Select Person Member Reports. So we're gonna go ahead and open up our second public comment of the evening, if there's anybody in studio or online that would make, like to make a public comment. Not seeing anybody online or in studio, gonna go ahead and close public comment, and there's no reason for a non-public session tonight.
Motion to adjourn, Chair President Sakoshai.
Second. Roll call.
Article five.
Capella, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Manstrek, aye.
Happy holidays, everyone, Merry Christmas for those that observe, Happy Hanukkah.